Mayor Gerardo Danaya. Vice Mayor Juan Castillo. Councilmember Jesús Roland. Councilmember Luis Galindo. Councilmember Martha García. Councilmember Miguel Villapando. Mayor, have a quorum.
Well, ever since I was in high school, I've been involved in this community, whether it be at the church group, the Somerton Police Program. And then I've been involved with the Knights of Columbus, the Yuma County Sheriff's Office as a volunteer. So I feel that with that level of volunteerism, I can do well for the city of Somerton. I've also been involved in the municipal cooperation for the city of Somerton, the Somerton Planning and Zoning Commission for several years, currently the chairman. So that brings a lot to the table, I believe. To continue growing, hopefully with the new high school, that'll bring more more sales tax revenue to the city, more more employment opportunities for the community. Also with the new park coming in, that's gonna, it's gonna be a new amenity, the new park view commercial center. So I think all those, those factors are gonna bring in some good sales tax revenue to the city. The number one issue? Probably more more focus on public safety, more focus on quality of life, more focus on the in the parks programs. I believe public safety. Public safety should be one of the priorities, adding more, more, more personnel, more staff. Probably attract more retail businesses to come in and establish. I know that a lot of them look at the demographics, but there's opportunities out there to bring in more, more retail, more businesses to generate sales tax revenue. Probably offering incentives. Trying to lure them into the city to, to come and establish their businesses here.
Employee.
I would probably refer them to the city manager. Probably refer them to go through the chain of command. And so they can resolve the issue.
Please describe your previous work, the work in the community and how these experiences qualify you for a position on the council.
Well, first of all, I've been employed with the city for over 22 years in the Parks and Recreation Department at the Yuma Civic Center. So that, I believe, brings in some more general aspect of how the, the city is run, how a park recreation is run. So I think it brings, it brings more to the table.
As a council member, city staff members reach out to you and express concerns about certain processes and procedures not being followed. What do you do and how do you proceed?
First of all, listen to the, to the person or to the, or to the persons. I refer them to the proper department, either city administrator or, or the different department, department head that, that's involved in the issue. Just basically hear and hear the concerns.
There are some positions that report directly to mayor and council. What are your expectations for the city manager? What are your expectations for the city attorney?
For the city manager to be, to have an open line of communication always, that's always a good thing. For the city attorney as well, just keep an open line of communication at all times.
If, if a candidate did not run last year or la- last time, last election, change this. You had the opportunity to run for a council seat whilst, well, till you ran, so I guess this doesn't apply to you. Thank you. It's nice to shorten to the point. Thank you. Yeah, you can stay here or go upstairs or go have a beer, whatever you want. Hello. Can I have a seat if you want? You're not presenting, you're in the, you're in the hot seat. The first question. Why are you interested in being an official for the city of Somerton?
Well, I've been a longtime resident. I've always been involved in, of course, I used to work for the city as a park director. But even before that, I've always been involved in the community. You know, I helped start a Boys and Girls Club here. I brought the YMCA, helped put together programs and supported. I've also been involved in, you know, helping with development in, in the back. You know, I've always kind of wanted to, and always helped. Our family's always been involved in Somerton. In every aspect, I think, been here for, you know, more than 40 years and Somerton's home. And I, I want to make sure that we benefit and we, we continue to grow and develop the way, you know, I see Somerton to be, so.
So that's a say, which is the next question, how you see Somerton? What is your vision for the city of Somerton in the next five years and the next 10 years?
I, I think right now Somerton has, you know, the potential for economic development and growth. You know, there are some challenges, I think, growing to the outlying areas and developing there. I think looking at potential, but I think, you know, with the new high school coming, development starting to come, I think that's something that has a mayor council has been developing. I see Somerton growing, but I think they, you know, you keep that best little city logo intact with the residents in the community. So, so, but I, but I see growing. There's different areas I think that Somerton can focus on because, you know, the farm, farming is important in this community. And I think we need to be cautious of that, but also start a relationship and developing that to grow as Somerton grows.
What do you think is the number one issue affecting city of Somerton? What is your solution?
So kind of what I just mentioned, it's development and growth. I think, you know, Somerton, one of the challenges we've had is landlocked, is, is growing to the different sections and areas. You know, going up to the mesa, continue to look at that development and, and also around the high school. I think again, I, I go back to, you know, developing that relationship with the farmers and, and really working with them in the future of what they see and, and working with them on a timeline to be able to move forward and grow Somerton. But also looking at different prob, other issues, you know, with maybe looking at annexation and looking at the different opportunities. Not just on growing to the west, but on the east and, and maybe even to the south.
The city of Somerton, like most municipalities strive to increase revenue. What do you feel the city can do additionally or differently to increase its revenue?
I think, you know, tax dollars are always important. And I think working on bringing businesses, manufacturing opportunities. So that goes back to developing and annexing certain areas that would provide an industrial area, a commercial area. You know, we do, I think Somerton does a great job with small businesses and, you know, and I think that's great. But I think we need to look at maybe a little bigger items of, of trying to bring people in, but bigger companies. You know, even looking at different types of revenues with, through maybe even online type of things. You know, really try to expand and think out of the box with, with trying to bring revenue in. But, you know, Somerton could do so much with its small businesses. But I think, and which they're the backbone really of, of Somerton. All these years, that's where we've gotten our tax dollars from. Other than, you know, when we get from the state and so forth. But, but I think looking at developing businesses, even, you know, the, I don't want to say big box, but, you know, those bigger types of industry that, that can provide that for us.
An employee reaches out to you and tells you that they got written up and that they did nothing wrong to deserve it. What do you do and what do you tell the employee?
I think as a council member, you know, I've sat in and I sit on many boards. You know, in the county, in the city and different other associations. And I think, you know, that is, that is a question that's asked commonly and it's, you know, it's, I think it's up to a council member to listen to them. But also that it gets referred to the administration, the people that run the day-to-day operations. They're the ones that see it every day. They're the ones that deal with it and they have a better understanding. So I think it's, it's important to communicate that with them, let them move forward with the process following, of course, following the policies, procedures that the, that the city has in place.
Please describe your previous work in the community and how these experiences qualify you for the position on the council.
Like I mentioned before, I've been Somerton for many years, been involved in a lot of projects. When I was with the Boys and Girls Club, I helped bring the Boys and Girls Club here when I was working here for the city. Of course, helped develop a lot of the special events that you see now. And so, so which they're, they continue to grow and develop and that's great. So I, I think that, you know, my involvement has been through commissions, through committees. I've also helped out in special events in the back, you know, not ahead, but they've called for, for suggestions, for help. And I've been available to support. I think, you know, I provide a lot of resources for this community. Now, I might not be working here anymore, but I still, I think, provide those resources and those opportunities for the city to grow and develop.
As a council member, city staff members reach out to you and express their concerns about certain processes and procedures not being followed. What do you do and how do you proceed?
I think again, it's speaking with the city administrator and having that confer, that conversation, letting them know the, the concerns that we have or that, that resident or that group has and, and let them follow up with them and, and be able to give them, you know, information or, or correction or, or whatever it is in the situation to be able to, to explain that to them and, and be able to let them know that this is the policy procedures and this is how things are, are done.
There are some positions that report directly to mayor and council. What are your expectations for the city manager? What are your expectations for, for the city attorney?
I think, you know, the city manager's expectations are to work with the department directors to, to have the day-to-day operations, you know, working well, providing input and leadership to those department directors. So they, they have the resources and opportunities to grow and develop in their separate departments. So, and with the city attorney, I think it's watching, you know, looking out for the city, making sure that legally we are making the correct decisions, providing those references or referrals and that, those recommendations. And so of course, those are probably two part, the priority departments when it comes to maintaining the city day-to-day operations.
Last year, last election, you had the opportunity to run for a council seat. What, what has changed that you are now interested in being appointed? Why didn't you run last time?
Last time, I've always, that's always been something that I've been wanting to do. I, I think that, you know, at that time, I think I was not in the city limits. And so I wasn't able to run. And so now I actually live in the city limits, but that was one of the turns and that's why I couldn't run.
Thank you, Mr. Gullabees. You can stay or leave.
Thank you very much.
Your first question. Why are you interested in being an official for the city of Somerton?
Number, number one, I like what I see. Okay, I think you guys have been doing a good, good work. As a matter of fact, I was, I was actually looking at this and this is the best way to go because it gives transparency. And I like that. And if we're gonna be operating this way, then that's the reason why. Because when I was a city council, we had actually a vacant also and I didn't see this process. You guys are making the difference. I like this.
What is your vision for the city of Somerton in the next five years, in the next 10 years?
The next five years? That's a good question. Our city is growing. Left and right, the news, the new high school coming up and primary schools also being built. So in the next five years, I see a lot of traffic. And my question is, how, how can we solve this problem in the next 10 years? Do we have all the infrastructure in place? Okay, the services in place. So hopefully through this kind of a public work, we can bring those services to the residents of Somerton. Definitely we need more, more street lights. And I believe we're gonna need actually some widening of the streets. And let's keep the water at the lowest rate possible. Because you already know that the more people is in town, the more water we have to bring to them, more services, more drainage, more everything. And then sometimes that comes with a cost. And I would like to not to actually bring those costs to the rest of the population, but to the newcomers.
What do you think is the number one issue affecting the city of Somerton? What is your solution?
The number one issue right now is Somerton, I think is one of the, we'll say, being a dormant community. We need to promote more of city. With different kinds of activities. We need to do more for them. Okay, I know we have the, like Tamale Festival, the Corn Festival, things like that. But we're still not on the map. And I hope crime doesn't place us where, you know, in the map. So I'm glad that we're still a very, very a community that is safe and it was actually a few years ago was characterized as the safest place to live, you know. But I will say right now, growing in, in people working outside the city, that's my concern. Not bringing enough revenues to the city to keep up with, with everything else that I mentioned before, infrastructure, etc.
The city of Somerton, like most municipalities, strives to increase revenue. What do you feel the city can do additionally or differently to increase its revenue?
So is that will sort, you know, to increase, you know, to build more homes and whatever, so we can increase revenue. But at the same time, it's more cost. So I think a little bit of lobbying at the state level and at the national level, you know, because sometimes it's kind of sad to see that some projects, you know, to save a little flower or a little lizard brings more money than to actually the needs of a small, a small city like ours. So in this position, you have that advantage to actually travel to Washington or Phoenix and really work with, with, with people that can actually help us bring more fundings. I remember that we were stuck because we had projects, we had actually the the city hall project. We couldn't move on because of the lack of funds. Okay, it had to pass like more than 10 years, more than 15 years. I see this very often with, with small cities. The lack of fund is, is not an issue. There is no magic formula. But working together as a one team, united front, maybe that can, that can help us solve this. At least, you know, bring a little bit more hope into, yes, we're gonna get this funding faster than, than we think. I don't believe in, you know, in, in going just big, 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 big. I don't believe in, you know, in going just big, 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 big for the fact of having more homes, having more revenue that way. Because, you know, we have to balance. But I do believe also that the issues of, you know, fighting for what is right, you know, the census, for example, population. I'm glad that you guys are taking the right direction to fight for what is us, the right amounts of funding for, for the city. Because I see a lot of traffic in the winter. I see a lot of traffic now during the summer times. Okay, and that means that our Somerton population has grown. And that's one way that we can address other entities for fundings. And I don't know, we, I believe we may have actually someone that is a grant, a grant writer, writer, am I right? We don't, we don't have no one to actually specialize in. Okay, that's, that was one of my suggestions many, many, many years ago when I was a city council. Because that's one way to actually get awesome, you know, funding.
An employee reaches out to you and tells you that they got written up and that they did nothing wrong to deserve it. What do you do and what do you tell the employee?
Can you repeat the question, please?
An employee reaches out to you and tells you that they got written up and that they did not deserve it. Did nothing wrong and to deserve it. What do you do and what do you tell the employee?
Well, number one, it's not, I don't believe in, in little micromanagement. That's not my position. And I believe, you know, as a, as a public official, it's not our, our position. You know, to, just have in place in the same, in the same situation that you guys are addressing the question. So basically, I will address that employee to go to the chain of command. Whoever needs to take care of that, then follow through there. And we are the last resource that we can actually address that issue, if it needs to be addressed.
Please describe your previous work in the community and how these experiences qualify you for a position on the council.
Okay, many times do I have left that, 12 minutes? Where do we start? I do hold a master's degree in education, in counseling. And the reason when I went into that area is because I saw the need actually back in 1998, when I was invited to participate in one movement that was called the Interfaith, okay? And pretty much that actually was an eye-opener for, for me and for a lot of local leaders to help the community. Okay, and, and after that, after I was done with the completion of my, my master's degree, I was seeing, I was invited to actually run for a city council. And one of the, the reasons why I run for a city council is because I was invited as a public member, you know, to attend a discussion on water, water rates. When I went into that meeting, I got the impression that the water rates or the decision to actually move the prices up was already made. So I felt like I wasted my time. And that's why I actually decided to run for a city council. And that's why I actually got into that position. Okay. Obviously, some of my former council members didn't like that fact, but that was what it was. Okay, some of them would tell me, hey, you're not from Somerton, you don't know the history of Somerton. But I'm aware of the problems of Somerton. As an educator, I'm in constant and direct contact with parents. Sometimes they, they ask for help. And if I can, I will direct them to the proper channel so they can get help or sometimes even myself. If I can help them, I will help them. Then I, I, I ran for, for a city council because I still needed that to see some changes. And eventually I stopped running because I started seeing changes in Somerton. And I don't know about the other possible candidates, but I've had run several times. And I think I have demonstrated very clearly that I want to serve my community in one capacity or another one. Right now, I'm currently, I'm the current chairman of the Parks and Parks Commission. And sometimes my, a few years ago, when, when I actually joined, it was sad to see that we didn't have actually funding to help people. Okay, not even $200. We were discussing actually, hey, how can we help this person? I mean, we only have $200, we have to divide 100, whatever. Now, the last year, now we have raised enough funding to, I feel comfortable to help people that request that, that help. And my vision is still the same. I mean, I serve in the public library. It will be starting in January. I will take over as a president of the Yuma County Library Board. I was appointed again to be their, their president of the board. Because I still see the need, okay? I'm very proud of the libraries that we have at the Yuma County. Beautiful libraries. And I would like to keep those services to be top, top of the best if we can. In school, I do the same thing. I volunteer. Actually, after school, I don't charge a penny. Sometimes my wife gets upset with me like, oh, another job that doesn't pay you. And that's basically it. Some of you are very familiar to me and you know what I'm saying because we agree in, in, in community service. And I believe that's the reason why you're here too.
As a council member, city staff members reach out to you and express their concerns about certain processes and procedures not being followed. What do you do and how do you proceed?
Again, if it's something that needs to be addressed publicly, we, I believe, you know, we can address that. But when it comes to where, again, an issue so super, you know, micromanagement, I don't, I don't like to get into those. Fee, I believe that we, we saw that, that problem. I saw that problem when I was a city council. So I, I basically, I spoke to whoever was the mayor back then and, and and the mayor actually addressed that to the other directors of the programs. And, and that was the last time I hear something like that. Because I didn't want to get involved with, you know, with, you know, stepping on somebody else's toes. I don't like that. And I will not do that.
There are some positions that report directly to mayor and council. What are your expectations for the city manager? And what are your expectations for the city attorney?
The recommendations for city attorney or city manager?
What are your expectations?
Oh, my expectations.
For them?
Well, the expectation says what they were hired for, manage the city. And the lawyer to make sure that they actually advise us when there is issues that may actually get a conflict of interest and all the, then there is lots of issues that, that those number, number, from my own opinion is those positions are essential to the city, to the proper running of the city. We cannot run the city without the city manager. The city manager is actually under the city council guidance. And we have to work together with the city manager. And the city manager has to work together with us as a city council. Or at least that was my vision also when I was a city council, as a team. So we can see how can we work. It matters for the, the, or lawyer, city lawyer is needed, okay? Because there is a lot of, sometimes I'm not an expert in law, in public laws. And I will definitely need advice from, from the lawyer. Is it okay to, to do this or not? Okay, for example, I didn't know that, that if I actually request an item, the agenda, and it's not posted once or twice. Okay, because the mayor doesn't like that item, the agenda, then that's when I can actually have a talk to the, to the lawyer, say, hey, look, I requested this item, the agenda is not being posted. This is the third time. What do I do? Okay, so I will seek for that advice. I see that's, so my guidance counselor basically in matters of, you know, how to make decisions also. For example, a few years ago, when this building across, okay, thanks to our lawyers, I mean, we were able to get what we wanted to get, okay, and build this beautiful building across the, the city hall. Okay, and I believe it's, it's a very important role, you know, in the city. So it has to be, or lawyer has to be used at maximum.
Last election, you had the opportunity to run for a council seat. What has changed that you are now interested in being appointed? Why didn't you run last election?
The last one, I, I don't know if it was like six years ago or eight years ago. As I said, there were some issues bugging me there, you know. I didn't feel comfortable with, okay? But as I mentioned, I like the way that you guys are handling business right now. Okay, and I like the way that the city is actually, the direction of the city. Okay, and that's the reason why I'm here, is I would like to be part of that. Okay? No interest. Basically, I don't own any business. My checking account, it probably is much, much lower than you think. And if it's not in the negative, it's very close to be there. So if I am actually in this position, probably will continue being in that position. Just love for, for Somerton. I'm very grateful, you know what? I married someone that actually was raised here in Somerton. My kids are actually growing here in Somerton. And, and I like what I see and I like to walk in the streets and walk my dog. And I love the, the paths, the walking paths that we have. And so I have seen a lot of very positive things. You know, and I would like to contribute with, you know, with that, with that mentality.
Thank you, Mr. Vuskis. You can stay and hear the other interviews or welcome to leave.
I have, I have parent teacher conferences. Thank you very much for your, for your time and for giving me the opportunity to be here.
Thank you. Why are you interested in being an official for the, for Somerton City Council?
Well, I just would like to help all the people around us in this town and city.
What is your vision for the city of Somerton in the next five years, in the next 10 years?
What was that again?
What is your vision of the city of Somerton in the next five years? And what is your vision in the next 10 years?
Well, five years, I think it's gonna grow. But in 10 years, it will be bigger than what it's gonna be.
What do you think is the number one issue affecting the city of Somerton? What is your solution?
Well, it's kind of hard right now because when you're not around on things, you know, it's pretty hard to find out until you're in it.
But from the outside looking in, what, what is the number one issue affecting?
Well, I mean, it's it's a few things. But the main, main thing is work all together, all the people around running the city.
The city of Somerton, like most municipalities, strive to increase revenue. What do you feel the city can do additionally or different to increase its revenue?
Well, I'm not involved a lot in, in right now in it. And I really don't know until if I get selected, you know, I would like to, you know, help in her hearing what's going on to help create more.
An employee reaches out to you and tells you that they gotten written up and that they did nothing wrong to deserve it. What do you do and what do you tell the employee?
Well, that's where you have to go back and find out what exactly happened. And find out from the bottom exactly what happened.
Please describe your previous work in the community and how these experiences qualify you for a position on the council. Please describe your previous work in the community and how these experiences qualify you for a position on the council.
Well, I've been around Somerton for many, many years. And I've been helping, you know, a lot of events. Create some, you know, helping people, help do their jobs and create, you know, events and all that things that are going on around in Somerton.
As a council member, city staff members reach out to you and express their concerns about certain processes and procedures not being followed. What do you do and how do you proceed?
Well, I mean, that's something that you have to just find out what's exactly what's going on, you know, without making any decisions.
There are some positions that report directly to mayor and council. What are your expectations for city manager? What are your expectations for city attorney? There are some positions that report directly to mayor and council. What are your expectations for the city manager? And what are your expectations for the city attorney? Those two positions report to council.
I reserve that question.
Okay. Okay, I'm gonna go to the last question. Last election, you had the opportunity to run for a council seat. What has changed that you are now interested in being appointed? Why didn't you run last time?
I haven't. Did, did, did I what?
Why didn't you run last time? And why do you want to be appointed?
I was not retired from work. I was still working. And right now I have my own business and I don't have to, I mean, I have my free time.
So going back to the question number eight, what are your expectations for Mr. Cabrera and your expectations for Mr. Lozano?
The job they're doing?
Yes. What, what do you expect from them? What do you want to see?
Right now, the way they're doing their job, it's great. I mean, I know both of them and I, I mean, it's, it's great.
This concludes the nine questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Worst question.
First question. Why are you interested in being an official for the Somerton City Council?
The reason I'm interested in belonging to the Somerton City Council is in order for me to continue to serve in in this capacity. I think that my dedication to the city. Is given at a hundred percent of me. I'm here for, my parents were our pioneers of the city of Somerton and I'm here as well. I think it's more just to serve my community in that capacity of city council.
What is your vision for the city of Somerton in the next five years?
What is?
Your, your vision and and your vision in the next ten years?
My vision in the next five years is for the city of Somerton to be prosperous, to grow. It is so important for the city. To expand in order to bring more businesses here. And that does take a while, ten years, of course, is quite a while. We do have the general plan in place. So I feel that once, as council is doing currently, I think that we. Together can come up with ways for the, for the community to benefit from that. And so the growth will either go to the east or the west within the ten, next ten years.
Thank you. What do you think is the number one issue affecting the city of Somerton? What is your solution?
I feel that the number one issue right now is there is not enough property, not enough land. And that the city can invest in. I think that is what is affecting the revenues for the city.
What is your solution?
My solution is to continue working with the council as you guys are doing now, investing, purchasing. That is of land acquisitions. The properties that are on the Main Street corridor. And that will help to entice more businesses to come to our community.
The city of Somerton, like most municipalities strives to increase revenue. What do you feel the city can do additionally or different to increase its revenue?
As I previously mentioned, I think it's important that council continues to invest. In acquiring the lands that are available or soon to be available in order for the enticement of bigger. Businesses to come in, more businesses come in, more state revenues through sales checks. We, you can invest in those lands so we can have more homes. Development, medical facilities, schools, all of that brings revenue to our city.
An employee reaches out to you and tells you that they got written up and that they did nothing wrong to deserve it. What do you do and what do you tell the employee?
What, what do I do as a council member? The first thing obviously is, I, I wouldn't turn the employee away. It's very important to listen. But make it very clear that the city has a city manager that takes care of that situation. And give my opinion that they need to reach out to their direct supervisor. And most of all, go to the city manager themselves first. Always follow the chain of command is so important. Council's not here to micromanage.
Please describe your previous work in the community and how these experiences qualify you for a position on the council.
In the last thirteen years, I have been a member of the Planning and Zoning Commission. Along with other initiatives that the city has done here in our city. I'm also the Somerton School Board Clerk Vice President. That capacity now for seven years. And I'm here for my community. I have volunteered in so many different ways that I want to continue doing that.
As a council member, city staff members reach out to you and express their concerns about certain processes and procedures not being followed. What do you do and how do you proceed?
I would make sure that this, that the employee fully understands the policies and procedures that are in place within the city. And then again, redirect them to the proper chain of command, either their managers, supervisors, or the city manager.
There are some positions that report directly to mayor and council. What are your expectations for the city manager and what are your expectations for the city attorney?
My expectations for the city manager is to be out in the community. To understand, to listen, and to bring back any concerns. That he or she listens and hears out in the community in order for council to enact. As far as the city attorney, I think it's important for the city attorney to. Oversee and protect the city council.
Last election, you had the opportunity to run for a council seat. What has changed that you are now interested in being appointed? Why didn't you run last time?
You know, I really don't have a specific answer as to why I didn't run. I just feel that. The time, this perfect opportunity rose today. And I had to take a chance and I'm here. I don't have a specific answer as to why not. You know, I just didn't, I don't want to say that I didn't feel I was ready. But. I, I'm here and I want to take a chance and the opportunity presented to me.
Thank you. This concludes the nine questions. Is there someone else? Was, was Mr. Bass notified? Did he respond? He confirmed, did not show up. Okay. Go into executive session. Motion by councilman. Second by councilman. All in favor? Any opposed? Motion carry. So we're gonna take a five minute break and then go into executive session and we're gonna come back and appoint.